I have pleasure to lead this to the live American to the public of the state's formation on God with the pistol justice for all. Thank you. So it's meeting the September 13th, I think, of the film board trustees in public and set up as first order. Our first order of business will be to address promotion to improve the citizens to the regular date of August nine and to approve the minutes from the special meeting of August 29.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Public favoring, I stand aye.
Aye.
Oh, your motion is agreed to. I will begin with the mayor's report. And we have a presentation of some importance to some of our goals here in the village in terms of the waste water system that we have. And we'll get to that early in session. As I report to you at the end of the summer, I wanted just to review that in the last 30 days, we've had a terrific visit from the antique community, which we are a sister community relationship that led to an affair that was held, a sailboat race and all of that early in the month. We had the second return of Cardinal, Seg Harbor Fire Department, which is a very nice spirit event this year. Again, enriched the younger drive, younger kids' lives during the popular events. There were a Zanvers party for Maria on beach. A large crowd celebrating Sister Anne's 40th anniversary. On for Maria, there's parties on the beach that address and say, Harvey Bills, all very joyful. And very successful show, they did this summer, musical ragtime, well public return to the whole other theater events, which is very nice. We had a harvest this weekend. They work on every level and putting weather. We had a big musical come on that in Strong Lake Park, just as we had had the Indian party there for gaining experience on how to position how conduct events there. And just coming will be the American Music Festival. It is grown where there'll be an introductory event on Thursday evening, 22nd, and it runs through the weekend. A lot of talent along with people. The cinema is having a big event this coming weekend, fundraising event. So as is a group called now Rock the Boat that is raising kind of fire mode. So I feel a lot together in my head and I feel like the community is coming way back and a nice spirit vibe on the dock this weekend. The only dark spot was asking the mayor to sample seven different colors of clamshell. So I asked the ambulance to stand by. For my news, I survived and happy to say. And it looked to me like for the clamshell contest was the longest and the biggest crowd in any of the events. So and well, the races were back. And so a lot of good stuff clearly continues to emerge from the on the more serious side, we are agreeing to, both we've had from some community groups, to have a sort of a plenary special meeting sometime soon to look at and for us to report on power approach to power management planning, management planning, if you will. And we settled on the date of October 3rd, that's Monday. We will talk more about that, but it is in the works. I'm going to be conducting with my colleagues for the next few weeks and under the special committees that we're working on to deal with governmental policy and our safety policy, both of which are geared to applying the lessons of Noriah from two weeks ago, that tragedy. Morris, take time, John. And we're going to examine the lessons learned there and apply them. A big part of that is to bolster our rental policy in the village in terms of inspections, installation of fire safety devices, all of that. That will be going on. We're also going to need to look at what authority we have for truck policy. The number of trucks that bypassed to and from the East End through the village now has grown again this summer. It is infecting more and more smaller and smaller streets as traffic is growing. So we're going to give our attention to that as well. I am in the final stages of hopes of completing the restoration of the national grid parking lot to the village. And we are actively seeking CPF monies for a number of matters, including to Main Street, suing CPA, Slime Lake House, Silly Farm, Mars service to Kansas City. So there's a lot of activity on that front. And finally, we're setting stage for the processing of the first and or hopefully will be more than 1,000 activities to go. So a lot going on. And I will do the reports on the first three departments and starting with the public works. And of the works, not a surprise here that the daily garbage count in the village just about doubled during the month of August with the having had to adapt the schedule for these two pickups today over key locations. Shoulder work continues. We've had to do a lot of cutting back growth, decreased landscaping into the right way. We've got to work to get it safe. It's tree trimming, patching roads, painting stop signs around the village. This week is now, the new garage doors are now in place on the firehouse, over the firehouse. But I guess we have a problem with just the mirrors on the truck are which is why through the
Well, that's that's a different situation. That's with, we have another fire truck at another firehouse off Murray Hill. But the mirrors have come in and it being, they're going to be, they're going to be in school.
Good. When we spend money and it can't be used, it's troubling. And on Harvard docks, we've lost a lot of our personnel at college that school and probably the most successful summer we had in our harbor this summer. Reservations continue to be strong for the next several weeks. And the waiting lists have gotten ever longer. We hate to deny reservations, but for our little staff, we can accommodate. The regular number of marine patrols during the month, 23, three disabled vessels were assisted. We had either on our own or participating with other water safety people, a number of cases, callouts, and number as we finish the month of August, we are running at this point now $264,000 ahead of last year with our orders and our slips and our other fees on the transit stuff. The building department report is tracking, as we've seen in recent months, under the new rate structure toward a season number that is projected now to produce a grand total revenue of $560,000 on the year. So all of that work is bringing value to us and anything that comes in here that gives us the opportunity to not have to go to property tax, those very little issues. The new process we have now, we have our own fire marshal, who's also performing duties and code enforcement, has given us a lot more vision and ability to deal with the fire safety and really the code matters. And the numbers are all we're going to report. Routine inspections are up between code and marshal. Complete the mayor's report and those three departmental reports. And then I'll call now deputy mayor for the public safety.
Thank you, Mayor LaRocque. The Seg Harbor Village Police Department report is to start off by saying that the month of August, we issued 726 farming notices. The Seg Harbor Village Police Department had 893 calls for service among the lawns, which included five aggravated unlicensed operation, six suspended registrations, four grand larceny. We had 35 motor vehicle accidents. 15 arrests, two DWI's and AB uniform traffic tickets were issued. That's the police report. The Seg Harbor Fire Department issued a report given by, to me, my first assistant chief, Andrew Worrone. He says in the month of June, which should be August 2022, the fire department opted for 28 man hours. During the month, the officers and members of the department responded to 69 calls for service. These calls included six motor vehicle accidents and one structured fire. In the month of August, the Seg Harbor Fire Department hosted its annual conference with a spoken behaved speech. And once again, it was a huge success. We'd like to thank the village for their continued support for the event. Unfortunately, in August, we also saw a tragic fire in Noriah that claimed the lives of two young women. I would like to commend the men and women of the Seg Harbor Fire Department and the Seg Harbor Volunteer Ambulance Corps for their effort, they worked to try and change the outcome for the young ladies. I would like to thank North Sea, Southampton, East Hampton, Amagansett, and Bridgeham Fire Departments for their support at the scene with fire and EMS personnel. On a lighter note, as you spoke of there, we have the Rock the Boat Party, which is this coming Sunday, 4:30 to 6:30, we have the main firehouse on Fair County Road, that's 1357 Fair County Road. There'll be music by those new loungers. There'll be food, barbecue, stuff for the kids. So if the community wants to come out and support these funds or if you raise to help us purchase the boat that we're looking at to protect the harbor. So that's this Sunday, September 18th at 4:30. The other thing I just want to mention about the fire department is we have a meeting coming up at the end of the month with H2N to discuss initial concept for the building, the emergency service building, and also will come up with a little bit of budget. I just want to get some numbers to see exactly what the building's going to cost. Also, we've all discussed the firewall and the need for the boat. So I'm hoping that whatever I'm not hoping, I know the board is committed to getting this boat and whatever shortcomings we have with this fundraising, we'll commit to getting the rest of the money for the boat. The other thing that I want to mention is the low sat. Right now, our members are at a certain level, both the ambulance corps and the fire department, when not at a maximum level, they can be attributed. That level should be increased for the volunteers. That's the retirement fund that comes when you reach age 65. Every year that you're credited with service, you get funds contributed to that fund. So I'm looking to hopefully let's look at increasing that for the membership. This is all part of, you know, recruitment and retention for the fire department and the ambulance. So I'm looking forward to working with the board, with the community, your support to get these things approved. So a lot of things happened with the fire department and the ambulance corps. Excuse me to their report. So the ambulance corps in August responded to 99 emergency calls at five o'clock nights, two meetings, four work details, for a total of 1,314 man hours. To date, the ambulance corps has done 620 calls so far this year. I know that concludes the emergency services report. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. We're going to skip over for an age report because in the introducing, the main event is and Bob is shifting some focus as we start putting together our broader planning. I'm surprised that in the next few weeks, we'll be having the organization meeting of expanding the role of the planning board to go beyond simply site plan approvals, as I've been doing, to actually oversee an overarching planning process that we'll talk more about in the next meeting. So Bob, thank you for stepping up to that. And to a human end, I'll hand it off to the board perhaps.
Not a lot to report with you on the board last issue because the application has been resubmitted as of August 30th updated for the project behind Main Street.
I think it was a little bit before that.
August 24th, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay. And a supplemental file on the 30th, I think. That's currently being reviewed.
And you also coordinated the agency. So
Has that, has the living on that expired or we?
No. So we have 30 days from, it was sent out August 25th to the other involved agencies for coordination of the agency. And that date, 30 calendar days under CECL, the law that we're required to abide by, we have to wait 30 calendar days before you can assume the agency. So those agencies, those other agencies, involved agencies who's be coordinated that sent this information to have 30 days to get back to you. And that will come due on September 24th. So that's why it's not official action.
Nothing else to report on that. In addition, I'll move into the Mash Park. So lots going on with Mash Park. The, as it's been mildly reported, the school has agreed to purchase the Marsden properties adjacent to the school that help with CDF. That's still in the works. And that thing brutally caused the school to delay the vote that was scheduled on bond for September 29th on upgrades, capital improvements of the park to allow the school and the park to reconvene. And we'll do so again tomorrow evening at the park board meeting to reexamine the long-term capital improvement plans for the park as well. So that the school can have a comprehensive view on all the facility needs that it can accomplish, mostly with Marsden Park, Marsden Properties as well as the park. It hasn't changed the relationship between or the intent relationship between Mash Park and the school. Both are still committed to the capital improvements that grades to the park. But it may adjust some of the things that are being, that's still subject to some discussion review by both parties. And all of that will be brought back to the public sometime after the Marsden property goes through CDF, CDF approval process. In addition, as also been widely reported in the papers, the grandstand work is almost complete, maybe fully completed by say, really appreciate the work that was done by people who have fundraised for it over the last couple of years, as well as the contractors who completed the work for us. Really a nice job, a beautiful refurbishment of the grandstand. In addition, we also have the park is hosting 5K race this Sunday morning at 9:00 AM. Guessing all of your assignments are run. I hope so. Can we watch? If not, it's not too late. You know, hopefully we'll watch.
I signed a date.
Yes, that's good. When are we signing for that? I couldn't find it. I'll get it to you. I will get it to you all. My, my, I was for this. And then tomorrow evening, in fact, at the park board meeting, both the superintendent of the school, the president of the school ward and the vice president of the school ward will attend the park meeting to continue to discuss the capital improvements for the park. So lots going on with the park and the school. That's it. The park board report for today. Lastly, I'll turn to the Justice Court. And the activity for August has, the revenue dropped down some given the past years. And so I'll look into that just to see if the activity is there. You know, hopefully it's really looks like there frankly, fewer parking violations going on around the community, which, which would suggest to me, maybe there's just less of a parking problem, but maybe not. So we'll get into that and see if, and Tim, I'd like to work with you on that too, to see, you know, if the Justice Court is on track for any revenue variances, we should be aware going forward. And that's it for the Justice Court.
Could I say that the follow up? Could that be a factor of, we had a lot of angle with COVID in the last year or so? That had been dealt with the courts. Is that something we're seeing or is that a separate issue, do you think?
Well, it's interesting because there was actually a, you know, the first half of the year was pretty consistent. And the summer was when the follow up took place. Which surprises me. I expected the follow up to happen more than the two months.
Do we have anything on the pay parking yet?
I was going to hold that off until next meeting. We'll have finished the cycle for the summer. The last few times I checked, we were running 30, 40% ahead of last year on revenue. But let's wait till the, we bumped that up. I'd like to make a full report. Then we can figure out what we're going to do with it. And last year's as well. The side. Regulating, I think in October, yeah.
Thank you. We can jump over now to the treasurer and then we'll put on the next one.
Hello, board. So for July, we're two months into our fiscal year. The revenues are up over the prior year, mostly due to the timing for South Hampton's portion of the fire and ambulance contract, which they waited until late December to pay off. Additionally, taxes penalties are slightly up compared to the prior year. And then we also see the extra revenue from the pay parking, which is on the treasurer's report. I don't remember the number, but we are up, like you said, 40%. We're on track for the expenditures. The highway department has seen some expenditures related to repairs for the buildings, including painting and other small repairs, mostly with the highway department and those buildings. We also have some HVAC work there we've been doing as well. The fire department did have a large purchase of the Pierce Pumper truck that was using the reserve funds. And then the others departments are slightly down there spending, mostly due to the ambulance department having vehicle repairs in the prior year. And we're also saw a decrease in our debt services over the prior year due to our installment, that principal being reduced by almost half. And then the sewer fund has an increase in spending as well, mostly due to the sewer treatment plant master upgrade plan, along with the expansion of the sewer shed L and K. And then finally, we are, we did switch to bonds for two long war bands. We'll be using state grants to pay down a large, large portion of the band before we did switch them to the bond. Doing so, this is going to save the village by not having to renew it up for another band for additional year, as well as locking in a lower interest rate, which they are expecting to increase that was, as we spoke to our bond people. So if we wait another year, we would see additional costs. So we save probably about $30,000 in band renewals and then 5,000 a year with interest rates, if you assuming they're going to increase. So it'll be 5,000 a year, pretty much for the life of that bond that we just received. And that's my report.
Thank you, Tim. With your motion, sort of set up the treasurer's report.
Second.
Second, public favoring, I stand aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Again, just in schedule because of the presentation we're going to have, if you set this up, then we'll put the questions on.
Okay. I'm going to start with our regular report, the sewage treatment plant. We'll talk about some grant activity. And then I'm going to introduce Mr. Mark Wagner, the Cameron Engineering, who's going to give us an overview of the sewer master plan that we've been working on for a number of years. So for the regular report for the month of August, the total gallons received was 3.028. We removed 54,500 gallons of sludge, give more important for 912. Suffolk County DHS inspection, the next inspection we can expect on 10/17. And as always, the DEC inspection day is open. There were no complaints this month. And the summary of operations, waste water treatment plan running well on the overall permitted levels, we're operating four of the five bases. We had two arms of the plant over the month. One was for phase loss. It was an electrical issue. The others for the rotoscreen motor, a breaker, reset the breaker. All's okay. We took the rotoscreen motor to DP electric for rebuild. And while that's away, extra tension is being paid to all pumps down there because the rotoscreen removes larger solid objects that shouldn't be there in the first place. Removing them protects the pump action. So that's for the sewage treatment plant on grants. I mentioned this in our last meeting, we were awarded a $250,000 grant from Suffolk County. And we're going to split that because it's part of our grant applications for area KML in trying to sewer those homes. That will be split between area KML. We have a resolution tonight for granted another grant for Suffolk County, which will be using for remediation of surface water on Bay Street and for the remediation of some surface water in Northwest corner of Havens Beach. That grant is a money upfront grant. It's 100%. And so once we get this application in, which after tonight's resolution, we'll be submitting that tomorrow, Thursday, we will be able to get that work underway as soon as possible. This afternoon, I was at Southampton, I'd like to acknowledge, welcome Councilman Scipani who's here tonight, who's a good friend of Seg Harbor. And this afternoon, we presented to the town board our application that was forwarded from the CPF Water Quality Committee in Southampton to the board with the recommendation. And that was for just over $3 million, which would be the local match we need to go to the DEC for full funding for the searing of area K, although no decisions were made. That came away with a good feeling. So hopefully things will develop. There were some questions that were, that we need to answer. So we're working on those. So the board will have all the information they need to make that decision. Once that decision comes down, we then will be placed to go back to New York State DEC for the rest of the funding. I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to present today and for the enthusiasm that there seemed to be for this project and an understanding of how necessary it is for the village. So that's the end of the grants. Moving on to the main event of the evening, I'm going to introduce Mark Wagner as the Cameron Engineering.
Are you sure you picked up your light reading for the subject? But I do want to welcome a councilman, a councilperson. Did you want to have a message for us tonight? Tanya, did you want to have a message for us tonight?
Sure, I'll just take a moment here. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the board, clerk, counselor. We, we, we looked at a number of water quality projects this afternoon. One of them was from the village Sag Harbor. Trustee Corish described, some of our questions surrounded questions of density and the use of CPF funds for density in the village. And, and, and one question on, on, on hookups, I believe. But I'm here to take a look at the, at the master plan here. So that's, that's what I'm here to see. So I appreciate that and all the work that you are all doing. There certainly is a lot of things going on in Sag Harbor. So.
Thank you. Great good talking.
Let me ask now for two, ten, any questions on the regular departmental reports? Mayor, treasurer, and department heads to this point. Are there any questions?
I have a question to you, Chance.
Or, I'm sorry, the bottom and then, sorry.
The fact that the treatment plant is in East Hampton Town. There's no bearing on Suffolk Town's response.
No, once the asphalt is out there, the water is kind of fungible. So most of the service areas are.
Thank you. Yeah, absolutely. Douglas, you'd be two forty four Madison Street. A couple of questions, I think in the, in terms of the affordable housing plans and particularly in the, I believe it's the office district, the Bridge and Rose Street. So there was a report, I believe, in the express today saying that Nelson Pope wires will not be the consulting group on the environmental review, environmental impact statement. And obviously, there's been a lot of controversy around that group. So one of the key things I think is to understand how you'll be looking at replacing Nelson Pope. And, you know, one of the things that struck me in this very good document you produced earlier this year, the March twenty second update and so review of the the, the big picture planning process is a lot of references. Welcome to community involvement. And you mentioned the, the plenary session you're planning for, I think, October third. But it's, it's going to be very important to really engage the community. I do understand that you can't specifically discuss plans that have yet not, not yet been submitted. But it's very important, given the amount of proposals that are floating out there to, to really let the community understand that the full breadth and reach of the other proposals and have an open discussion. I'm particularly concerned about the, about that Bridge, Bridge Street, Rose Street property. We, Catherine, my wife and I have lived here for about thirty years. For about five years, we were actually at the bottom of Garden Street near the intersection with Spring Street. And I've said to quite a few people recently, Spring Street was named that for a reason and has absolutely nothing to do with the season. You know, that is a flood zone, as I think we all know. And my real concern is that it's going to be a difficult site to build on. And ultimately, the, the risks of having a, a project that is started, doesn't complete, ends up worst case with the village facing a, a big hole in the ground full of potentially polluted water. Now, this is a very serious consequences if this doesn't work out properly. And so we really want to make sure that there's, you know, full engagement and really thorough review of these proposals before any decisions are made. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much. Let me answer a couple matters that raised. First of all, the village immediately acted with Nelson Pope authorities. They have withdrawn from their assignment on the affordable housing proposal, the application that is in. And we have a resolution tonight to bring on a professional project advisor and manager on behalf of the village for the village business of reviewing that work and giving us, of course. So we do have a replacement. That professional will be supported by car rental gear, planner, and others as needed. We have a resolution. We'll get that part of the agenda to appoint that individual for that assignment. So we acted swiftly. We didn't feel there was any real necessity to wait. So we backed swiftly. But we were concerned that there be no pause in the calendar and with this point, we may have to. There will be no pause. Get that to the board. With regard to the reference to other projects out there, I want you to know that tonight for the fifth month in a row, Bay Street Theater declined to come and report on its plans. I cannot characterize their reasons except to say they said they could not be. I mean, let us discuss this in May, June, July, August. But it was a period for tonight. They are not here as you see. There is a short letter to say. So I don't know how to describe that as a proposal because Bay Street Theater's now been talking for a couple of years about a new theater. But in fact, they haven't applied and it's been a good half a year since they've appeared here to share any information about their plans. So I'm hoping that that will change as time goes on. Right now, there is no plan. Any note, we have seen single receipts from that potential. The other thing that somehow has gotten vocabulary and is tied around it there is I've been asked, what about the proposals to build the parking garage? There is no set proposal. One of the rumors I've been dealing with attributed that to me. I can tell you, I have no plan for parking garage. I have no plan to make a plan for parking garage. My colleagues and I have not even discussed that except in the broadest sense that we have become aware in recent time that the subject comes up more than it did. I've been here twenty two years. I'd say it's only in the last three, four, five, maybe six years where people raise the possibility of this. But there is no plan. So in terms of how we address two plans that don't exist, Bay Street and the parking garage, like, let me tell you, I don't know how to address plans that do not exist and haven't been set of tools. That's why we don't report on them because there's nothing to report. As for the rest, I guess I'd like to make a quick point as we've discussed in the trial. That we want the engagement by the community as full as rich as possible. We'll do whatever formats are necessary. But it is important to understand that as soon as we get through this initial calendar that this or little attorney has described, we will be then locked into a calendar that flows to us from higher authorities as to how much time we're allowed. The sequence of when we bring the scoping and what the public is on. So that is going to be on schedule. That will be strictly in accordance with rules. And if you have concerns, that is where to really have your tire in the road because that's where the decision that you will be.
Based on that record?
Based upon that record. If it's not in that record, it's difficult. So anything you think should be on that record literally published in that calendar. And that's where to make your bones on, on that particular application. And when we go past the statutory date of September.
September twenty fourth.
September twenty fourth. I want you to recognize that we, as the board trustees, with now this role in these large projects, we have to be careful not to participate in ex parte communications about that application once it's live. So that's not entitled under our desk or anything like that. It is honoring the very proper traditional administrative law idea that this has got to remain on the record, under the rules of the law. So I've been seeing a lot of people this week, last week, right after the twenty fourth, but after that, the format is different.
Could you explain what you're talking about?
I'm sorry, man. What's, what's your question?
We're lost. What you're talking about? What are you referring to?
The affordable housing.
All right, thank you.
But you have to, yesterday.
Just a really clarification and on top, you know, kind of a mandatory question. So you're saying, just if I can just qualify this, are you saying that you have a proposal that you'd be looking at or considering as the village point of view? And that you cannot entertain any other ideas after the twenty fourth? So we can't ask you something?
Officially and legally, this is an application that will become live in the administrative law process. We cannot have a point of view. We are a neutral or, and we've been proponents for thousands of questions about that. But we are not the owners of this application. This application is not us. It is a privately held group of properties. And it involves, I think, three or four partners. We refer to it by the name Conifer as the lead, the name that presents itself to us. But no, we don't, we, we have to be officially and actually neutral and do our job. Check. And that's what we're, that's what I'm describing. But it is that project, which is the only project that anyone has applied for under our new affordable housing statute, statutes. Yes, sir.
I'm just wondering how the plenary session is going to work if, if the board is already in the point where you can't discuss the plan?
Well, we can discuss the application. And if you want to put evidence or opinion or advocacy forward in connection with that application, the place to do it is in the formal proceedings that accompany that. And we will, as I guess, October or September twenty fourth, be inside that process.
Even now, we're getting inside of it now.
We are now, but not in the same formality. By that time.
Can I ask you a part of clarifying question?
Yeah.
Can we discuss the process? What you're saying is we need to do this in public session. This is a public operation.
Right.
It's not that we cannot discuss the product, process, project, entertain ideas, have discussions about it, but it has to be a public process.
Correct. Correct. Okay.
And we could ask questions and all the concerns and that.
Absolutely.
Could do all of that. But I think the mayor was trying to make the point that we want to make sure that all of those discussions actually happen in the formal record for that particular application because that's where you're going to draw from when you make a determination.
Yes.
I'm just in terms of the replacement for Nelson Pope for his.
I'm Catherine Levy. I live with that elegant gentleman at two forty four Madison Street. In terms of the replacement for Nelson Pope for his, I presume that you realize that at this point, given the lack of public trust in Nelson Pope for his, it's incredibly important that there be trust in the next consultant firm who are going to be critical for evaluating the process in a rigorous way. So when are you going to release the name of whom you're considering for that role?
Seven, a few minutes ago, we're going to add that.
Tonight?
I'll release it. Here now, I don't know if the resolution's on the table.
With, with.
Consulting firm.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Jim, shall we clarify that there'll be other consultants for, to more.
I'm just going to say that we actually.
Okay, that's fine.
But this is basically the lead figure and will be supported by a team who is trying to get our code. Are there any questions to do with the report as soon as we finish? Thank you. I would ask for motion to approve all of the departmental reports.
I'll make the motion.
For a second, all those in favor, if you'd like to say aye.
Aye.
Now drumroll, presentation of the sewer master plan, Maestro, Adrian Bush.
Well, thank you. I'm not the maestro, I'm just the facilitator. The conductor.
We can hear you, Adrian. Thank you.
We're gonna speak up. We have to reject. It's good Catholic school, there. So a number of years ago, we in our town created a sewer master plan for the village. We felt this was something the village needs to address some issues. We applied to both East Hampton and Southampton CPF Water Quality for Water Quality Committee for funds. We refunded fifty percent of the cost of this undertaking from Eastham. I'm very grateful for that. And I help all of the subsequent funding as this project has developed. I have here, I recommend you take over, download from our website, the full sewer master plan. Tonight, Master Mark Wagner from Cameron Engineering is going to give us an overview. There's just too much in here to go through tonight. But we're also planning on a work session, which the final date, I'm not sure if we've decided. We have a final date. We'll all size it up as soon, so that we can sit down and go through this in a grandeur fashion. People from different neighborhoods and village who will be able to see and be able to ask questions about their house, their street, their neighborhood, et cetera. So I would like now to have the floor over to Mark, Cameron Engineering, who's worked with us and has been a great friend of Sag Harbor in working our way through all of this.
And can we get the speaker up there?
Microphone.
The microphone or something.
Although that's not, there is a microphone there.
Thank you, Adrian. Thank you, Mayor trustees, village attorney, for the opportunity to present wastewater. Should I speak louder?
Yeah, ceiling. Having to shoot up to the ceiling.
I'm going to speak louder. So my name is Mark Wagner with Cameron Engineering. I'm a partner. I run the, the water and the wastewater group. I've been involved in wastewater for forty two years, forty four years, the last thirty seven at Cameron. I'm not counting my years at home fixing the toilets with the, in my parents' house. That, that, that doesn't go towards the experience, although it led me to where I am today. As Adrian said, we've been working on the master plan.
Say a lot closer to the ear.
As Adrian said, we've been working on this sewer master plant for the last couple of years. I'm going to present, provide a overview quick because I can get lost in the weeds and spend a couple of hours because I like talking about wastewater. So we're going to get the condensed version tonight and hopefully, thanks Connie for setting me up. Hopefully I can manipulate this without causing a problem. No, I already caused the problem. Already caused the problem.
Got it, yeah.
Okay. There we go. Slide show, special, slide show, slide.
Even engineering.
Sure, why it's not sharing?
Does I share? I have a colleague out in the virtual space that can present this. Are you out there, Natalie?
We have the.
Sharing, start again.
We don't have a presentation. No.
Can you, can you allow others, like colleagues just out there?
Yeah.
Natalie, Natalie.
So I asked her to join.
While the technical difficulties have been addressed, I'll start with the preview. But one of the, the primary movers of the study is protection of the village's waterways. Without the water, without your clean waters, the village, it impacts your economy, it impacts tourism, it impacts your recreation, swimming and boating and fishing. So the purpose of the sewer master plan really is for the protection of villagers' waters. And you'll see how we started out. That was, that was our guidance, our guidance. And where we started was looking at.
There it is.
It's a woman.
No doubt.
Thank you.
No question. So. So that's the guiding principle, the protection of the villagers' waterways. The village has a great asset. The village has a wastewater treatment plant down by the, down by the marina. That wastewater treatment plant is handling only about thirteen percent of the parcels in the village are connected to the wastewater plant. And that flow is, it has a peak pre-COVID of about a hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day. The plant is sized for two hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day. We figured, just leaving a little buffer, that there's about ninety thousand gallons of excess capacity that could be assigned. So what the village has done with this master plan is look at what are the neediest places in the village to start accessing, accessing that capacity. So this, this plan will take you through the thought process. There's a, there's a number of factors that go into determining what are the neediest, the neediest areas of the plant. So we're going to try this again. Are you out there? Is Natalie controlling this or am I? I am. That's dangerous. Okay. The, the goals and objectives of this developable plan to protect the waterways. I just said that. Excess nitrogen, right? You hear a lot about nitrogen these days. Nitrogen, seventy percent of the nitrogen that's entering the village's waterways is coming from onsite septic systems, septic pools and septic tanks. The other, the other thirty percent is coming from rainwater, fertilizers, stormwater. So Stony Brook University, for several years, with funding from the village and other.
Multiple sources.
Private funds. Has been out there monitoring the waterways for the last six or seven years at different locations within the harbor. Dr. Chris Gobler of Stony Brook, the Center for Clean Water Technologies, has produced an annual report on the health of the waterways. And he talks about nitrogen, he talks about harmful animal looms, and, and talks about what are the causes of these. The village waterways. You know all better than I do what you have, the Sag Harbor Bay to the north. That's the largest body. The water enters into the inner, inner waterways through the, by the ferry, the ferry by the bridge. And it works its way into Sag Harbor Cove. You have Big Narrows, Little Narrows, Morris Cove, Upper Sag Harbor, and you have Outer Pond. And you have two, two tributaries. You have a little Northwest Creek on the east side and have Lagone Creek over in the southwest corner. That is feeding, feeding fresh water in, into the harbor, into this village waterways. We went over this. The plant has two hundred and fifty thousand gallons of capacity. The peak flow prior to COVID was a hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day. A facility plan gets developed at two thirty-five. Facility plant says, hey, the flow's coming up. What are you going to do about it? And we're setting the available capacity at ninety thousand gallons a day for planning purposes. The picture on your right is your wastewater treatment plant as it sits today. You can see the bulkhead is very close to the plant. The aerial on the left just gives you a little sense of where it sits in the overall village. It's over down by Bay Street. And you can see on the aerial on the right, you can see the vestiges of the, of the, of the breakwater that's starting now. So then down, the plant is down in the southeast corner of the, of the harbor. Wastewater Treatment Service Areas. Right now, you have seven areas that are designated as sewer service areas. As I said, thirteen percent of the parcels, and mostly, most of these are down in the downtown business area of the village. Sewage is collected in a gravity system, treated at the plant. The plant has very strict, what they call Speedy's permit, State Distrug Elimination System Permit. Nitrogen cannot exceed eight milligrams per liter. The plant consistently meets five or less milligrams per liter. And that's really a testament to the, to the gentlemen that are running the plant. They're really on top of their game. I've done a lot. I've taught wastewater courses for thirty-six years. I've operated facilities. It's a well-run facility. And the gentlemen down there, the operators, really care about their jobs down there. But you can see the thirteen percent is two hundred and eighty-eight parcels. There's eighteen hundred and sixty parcels in the village that are not sewer, that rely on onsite septic pools and septic tanks. Those onsite systems contribute nitrogen at a concentration between fifty-five and sixty-five milligrams per liter. What is that? That's ten times the concentration of the nitrogen of the treated water lead at the wastewater treatment plant. Prioritize the areas to connect. So we, we went through the village and we took a lot of, a lot of factors into place, physical boundaries, roads and streets, where the groundwater is, where the groundwater is flowing. Some of the groundwater flows directly to the north and to the outer harbor. There's groundwater that flows to the southeast that goes into the inner, inner waterways into Morris Cove, into the Narrows and up, and upper Sag Harbor, as well as Outer Pond. We look at the topography. One of the first things I learned in wastewater treatment is stuff runs downhill, hot water on the left. So you got to take advantage of the topography. The, the main street coming into the village has, is a peak, is the ridge. And from there, it flows, the topography flows to the northeast and to the northwest. Travel time. How long does it take the effluent to get into the harbor? If you're down low towards the harbor, it can be there in less than two years, probably less than a year. As you move back away to the southern portions of the village, you, you have some travel times that go as much as ten years. What's the significance of that? The significance is if you can start addressing the, the poor, the poor effluent, poorly treated from the onsite systems in that short travel time area, you're going to start to see a benefit quicker than, than in the other areas. We looked at soil characteristics, density, parcel size. Some of the parcel sizes in the, in the village are very, very small. And that means you have a lot of nitrogen per, per square foot. And the whole goal, not the whole goal, but the primary goal here is to reduce the amount of nitrogen entering the village's waterways. We identified sixteen parcels. I know it's hard to see, you know, where you might be in there. But we can, when we have those breakout sessions, do a little more hand-to-hand combat of where, where we think those boundaries might be. We scored, we had to rank those sixteen sewer sheds. The factors of most importance, if you're in a high groundwater situation, you got weighted greater, the density of the nitrogen, pounds of nitrogen per, per acre. Short travel time to the, to the waterways, that got, that got a higher, higher weighting. The scores were from one to three, one meaning minimal impact, three, the greatest impact. The weighting factors, ten to forty percent. Out of the sixteen sewer sheds, there was a, a low of one and a high, slightly below three. And this will start to glaze your eyes over, but if you look in the far right, you'll see the red, the highest score there is a three, and it, and it goes all the way down to one. Those are the sixteen sheds that we developed, that we established in the village. And you can see, well, you really can't see because you don't have the, the other map, but K, E, L, and I, those are all waterways that are, that all sewer sheds that are very close to the harbor, very short distance. And you can see that that scoring came up the highest. As you move away from the north and move to the south end of the village, the scoring gets less. It turns to the green, that it's not really, it's not really a high priority. The wastewater treatment plant, as we, as I said before, is, is your greatest asset. A lot of places don't have wastewater treatment plants. Your wastewater treatment plant was built in nineteen eighty, nineteen seventy-five with free money. So back in those days, money was the more readily available. Sewers are very expensive. But thank goodness, I believe it had something to do with, at the time, it might have been the Long Island Lighting Company, but it was paid for. And the primary purpose at that time was the downtown, the downtown village. But what we're thinking now, working with the sewer committee and the trustees, is to increase the capacity of the asset at the existing site. Go from two hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day. Newer technology, moving up to three hundred and twenty thousand gallons a day. With a better technology, with, with a better system for getting the nitrogen values even lower, even less than five milligrams per liter. And the last one is very important, sea level rise. It's happening. It's going to happen. Climate change is here. So what does that mean? The treatment plant is down by the harbor. It's got a bulkhead. If, and I don't want to scare anybody, the Army Corps says before the end of the century, the sea level could be rising as much as four feet. So that's not happening tomorrow, but in the next seventy to eighty years, if you take four feet and you're moving across the low-lying areas of the village, you're going to, you're going to have, you're going to have more nuisance flooding. I shouldn't even say nuisance flooding, maybe regular flooding. The treatment plant, and, and we believe that the treatment plant probably will stay there for the next short term, for the next five, ten, fifteen years. So if it's going to stay there, we really have to look at hardening the facility, making sure that, that these storm events, if they come, they don't knock out that asset. Unfortunately, a lot of the tanks are built above grade and they're out in the flood area. But the buildings, there's some things, we call it hardening the plant so that it can sustain, sustain any surges and storm events. Project financing, Adrian said, Adrian's been leading on the, the effort on getting grants. Grants have been coming in. We're all anxiously holding our breath on the Build Back Better and some of these other infrastructure bills that are being bandied about. But they take time, they take time to materialize. But what the village has done is, at least in the, the two sewer areas, they have, we're just about done with the design of the, of the sewer sheds for K and L, as far as where, wherever they go. Those are the two most important, the two most critical sewer sheds. So we're preparing the village so that if funding becomes available, we can get some of that funding. And that funding really, I've been in a lot of projects over the forty years. It's the person, the person meaning the general person, municipality, that is in the most ready position. You might not be the most needy or the most worthy, but if you're the most ready, meaning you've got your, your contract documents done, you've got your environmental review done, you've got a buy-in by your, by your residents, you've got your regulatory approvals, but you're waiting for the money. That's a very good position to be in, as opposed to if you give me money, I'll go do something. So you really want to get yourself, you're ready, you're ready to do something. In some cases, you're very close to, to being ready to do something. Project finance, EFC, that's the State Environmental Facilities Corps. We listed the projects for sewer on that, and you scored high. What does that mean? It means that if you decide to go the route with the EFC, they have what they call subsidized funding. It's about fifty percent of the market rate. I'm not a financial guy, but I, I got to believe that the market rates are going up with, with inflation. And getting a loan could be five, six, eight percent. If you go through the EFC, fifty percent of that is subsidized by, by the federal government. So you could get a loan at maybe three or four percent. Doesn't sound like a lot, but if you take the three or four percent and you go over a thirty-year period to finance these types of improvements, you're talking about savings of millions of dollars on that. The village has a grant writer that they work with. She's excellent. She has a very good success rate on getting the grants approved. And that's with hard work with the village board. We, we support the grants writer. And that grants writer is constantly, constantly looking at opportunities to pursue for, for grant money. And we also have, amongst it, we've got John Parker, who's a real protector of the, of the village when it comes to wastewater and infrastructure. He's constantly working, working the crowd, so to speak, to make sure that the village gets a fair, a fair hearing on, on what their needs are. And I would expect that John would continue that effort. And what the bottom, the bottom, the bottom three things coming from me, but you really need to consider a recurring revenue stream over the years to support this infrastructure efforts. The clean water is, is a benefit to everybody that lives in the village. So right now, you have thirteen percent of the parcels are connected and their sewage is being treated to a high level. And you have eighty-seven percent of the parcels contributing nitrogen at very high levels. So I believe that there should be some sort of contribution from those unconnected parcels, even if it's nominal, just so that everybody has skin in the game with protecting the village's waterways.
Or would you mention some of the devices that communities have used for that purpose?
Sure. So there are, there are. And what's interesting is, this is where I might get in the weeds, so somebody can, you know, pull me out if I get too far in, is Suffolk County, only twenty-five percent of the properties in Suffolk County are connected to sewers. Seventy-five percent are on onsite system. You won't find that anywhere else in the country. Suffolk County is like the septic tank capital of the world. Oh, I forgot this has been recorded. Strike that. So, so the importance of that is that, and the county is, is putting a lot of grants and funds into these IA systems, these IA systems. And they're given, you know, twenty thousand dollars for these IA systems. It's going to take a long, long time. There's three hundred and sixty thousand septic tanks out there.
Hey, Mark, I interrupted you for a second. Does the county still have funds for that? Because I was told that they ran out of money.
I believe it's, it get, they run out and then it gets, it gets.
But as of right now.
I believe now it's, it's getting replenished.
Because there is, there is, it seems to me there's a lapse and there's projects going on and there's no money from the county company.
I, I can, I can check on that, but I know that they run through this cycle where they have money. It runs out and then it gets re, re, restored. And the governor has a lot of money in this environmental bond that is, is coming through on the order of, I want to say it's two hundred, two hundred and fifty million dollars towards water and wastewater projects. This, it's not, it's not in place yet, but my understanding, it's, it's almost a done deal. So getting, getting to your point is, it takes a long time to, to move the needle, so to speak, when you put these small wastewater treatment plant systems on a single parcel. As opposed to you have a treatment plant that can handle a lot of flow. The idea would be to get as much flow as you can within, that's cost-effective, to get it down to the plant where it can be treated by professionals, as opposed to homeowners worrying about, you know, there's lights going off, you know, what happened. So not that, not that I'm not a fan, in some cases, there will be places that will never, never get centralized source. So in those cases. So in those cases, you have to look at putting in uh, IA systems. So water, in summary, the water quality is, is uh, is, is important to everybody in the village. And all connected and unconnected, oh, I'm sorry, may you ask, what are the, what are the?
What are, what are the forms of revenue raising?
Yeah, sure, so down, down, uh, I went, I told it, I went in the weeds, supposed to pull me back. So down in Maryland, the Chesapeake Bay Flush Tax. Everybody pays fifty bucks, fifty bucks a year, you know? So, you know, everybody's cell phone is two hundred dollars a month, my cable bill is two hundred and seventy dollars a month and I watch Discovery and HGTV, so, but, so fifty bucks a year is going into the kitty, and what they do with that, that money, that, they, they have centralized treatment plants, but they also have uh, little communal systems that are out there, a communal system can be sized for ten, fifteen, twenty thousand gallons and could handle maybe a hundred homes. So if you don't, if you're far away from the treatment plant and it's gonna cost a lot of money to get it to treat plant, you put a small communal system in that a hundred homes go to. So, so now you got, you got a little, you got a little something, that, that communal system is better than a hundred septic tanks and cesspools. So that money that's put into that kitty, at the, the Chesapeake, I, I don't know the acronym of the advisory board, but they collect that money and then they distribute that money to, to where it's best suited. If there's an improvement needed at the, the main regional treatment plant, some money goes there. If it's needed at a communal system, people's uh, septic systems get inspected. People don't know what they have, they just, until it starts to overflow at your kid's communion or fifth birthday party, you didn't know where the thing was, so. So it's good to have an inventory of who has a septic tank, does it work? I'm gonna take a guess that in those sixteen sewer sheds I talked about, some of them probably don't work as well as other ones because you have high groundwater, you have high groundwater situation. So if you, if you had an inventory of everybody's cesspool, septic tanks and, and you could grade them out, which ones are bad, and everybody's putting some money into it, you'd say, hey, now we gotta go fix, we gotta go replace Mrs. Smith's system because it, it's not working, she's pumping it out at once a month, it doesn't make any sense.
And another thing, Mark, is we, I know John knows about this, the number, the uptake on IA systems is very low. The number of IA systems in the village, I think we looked at that compared to the eighteen hundred parcels or two thousand parcels, and I don't think it reaches a hundred.
No, I thi- I think it's, I think it's maybe three dozen.
Three dozen, maybe, for all the time we spend promoting IA systems. Um, with sewer, if the pipe runs in front of your house, you have a legal obligation to connect and so you can get many, many more people. So we need to, I, I don't think there's one answer for the entire village, to your point, we need to look at different solutions for different areas of the village, for the new group system, or whether we can add it to the vast.
Oh, my question.
And so that's something we'll get into weeds, but we have our, our order session.
Uh, the next, the next steps. As I said, we're working on the sewer designs in the two most critical areas, K and L, the down by, the down by the water. And they're close, they're close to the existing sewer service area, so if you can connect to something that's close, that's important. When we complete those documents, that really sets you up for getting money, getting grant money from the, from the federal government. We believe that the plant, the treatment plant should be upgraded to three hundred twenty thousand gallons to give you excess capaci- I shouldn't say excess, extra capacity. And put a new, put a new treatment process in there so that you can get the, the water, the concentration of nitrogen below five, get it down to one. Make, make almost drinking water, except you wouldn't wanna drink it. Conduct workshops, Aiden said, with the villages, you know, public outreach, having people like me come out and sit down in, in this kind of setting, and you open up the plans. And it, it's really an educational process to people to understand, you know, what, what, what is the goal, what's the objective? How much is it gonna cost me, when am I gonna get, when am I gonna get connected? And uh, seek the grant opportunities that's ongoing. And the village should continue to support the water quality monitoring that, that Stony Brook is doing, because the more data you have, you can understand what's uh, where the problem areas are in the waterways. And I think that's it.
Very nice.
To, to put a little perspective on costs for any private home that's connected to the sewer plant right now, the annual sewer rent for the infrastructure is two hundred and fifty dollars a year. Um, and then the use rate is seven dollars ninety-eight, I think, what's the use rate, seven thousand gallons, right? Uh, so the infrastructure, the installation of the infrastructure is really expensive, but the use is not, i- i- it's not outrageous when you think about others, you know, what we're actually doing within the water and maintain the quality applied to the village for everybody. And another means our economy will run from, you know, waterfront, it could depend on cable. Um, I mean, Mark pointed out, it's a pretty good deal compared to cable. Exactly, um, we'll have a date for the in-depth work session. Um, I'll announce that as soon as we can all figure out where we are, most of the time for everybody. Uh, but again, I'd like to thank Mark Wagner and like to thank Town Southampton for all the support. And Town East Hampton are not here tonight, but maybe they're listening in, and everybody who's helped us in all the ways, it's been quite a journey, but I think we have traction now, I think we'll really see improvements over the next several years, we'll start, you know, stakeholders and put in infrastructure, which I, which I think is very exciting.
And can I add a couple, yeah, are there questions, or John, do you wanna say something?
Just, just, yeah, I've been working with Mark for, what is it, four years on this, uh, uh, something, something like that, uh, anyway, so I've learned a lot, lot from. I'm on, I'm, I'm on the sewer committee.
Just introduce John Parker of your address.
Okay, thirty-three Shaw Road, okay, it's a, huh. I just wanna say, uh, Mark referred to a number of times the surface water, basically, the night, the problems with nitrogen in the surface water. But it's also a critical problem with the groundwater that we drink. Uh, and the level that's considered safe for the groundwater, for drinking water is ten milligrams per liter, and this is according to uh, reports that we've seen. One of the things that Dr. Gobler emphasized when he gave a report here earlier in the year is that in many places on Long Island, including around here, the groundwater level, nitrogen in the groundwater level is approaching the safe drinking water level. So it's, it's, it's not just a question of, of the surface water, of the environment, of the, of the surrounding water, it's a critical question of the, the, the water that we drink. Uh, because if that level ever reaches or gets close to the drinking water level, let us help ask. Uh, in fact, many scientists think that the ten milligrams per liter level is way too high and it should be, should be lower. You should understand, however, in regards to sewage treatment plant, uh, is putting out at three or four milligrams per liter, you know, it's much lower than, than, than the drinking water level. Uh, whereas one of the problems with regular septic systems, as Mark said, it were sixty-five milligrams per liter, even the, the new IA system, septic systems, uh, they are permitted at, at nineteen. So that's much higher than, than the drinking water level, so they still contribute to the, to the problem. The only other thing I wanted to add is, Mark, if I did my math correctly, uh, when you're talking about increasing the capacity of the plant to three hundred twenty thousand gallons a, a day, that should allow us to almost double the number of properties in the village which are sewed. In other words, you would add another two hundred and fifty or maybe three hundred uh, of properties. Would have a very significant impact. To give you an example of the impact, uh, in Sewer Shed L, uh, we're only talking about adding forty properties. Uh, the impact of that would be removing twenty-six hundred pounds of nitrogen per year that would be going into the, to the groundwater and, and into the surface water. That's a big impact, uh, it's, it's almost a car, it's a weight, weight, weight of nitrogen. And, and so if we can do ten times that or so, or five times that, i- i- it'll be a tremendous impact on the, on the waters. Positive impact, thank you.
I have a question, John, um, um, the, most of the village's town water. And those wells are much deeper, right, they're a thousand feet, they're down into the aquifer. Aren't those wells way deeper than?
Yes, yes, and you'll have to mark, you'll have to ask Mark those technical, those technical questions, but you're still, you still get some nitrogen, that, that, there's still a problem with the wells. Uh, wi- with the wells in terms of the nitrogen level i- increasing. Uh, yes, it's not as, I think it's, Mark, we said it's not as critical for those deeper wells, or you wanna say?
The, the wells that, that Sag Harbor or to the south, so they're not, they're not getting, they're getting contamination from other areas, but you're not, you're not drinking, I don't want anybody to think that you're drinking uh, contaminated wastewater, no. But it, the, as, as John pointed out, the ground, the background nitrate, nitrate levels are rising. They've been rising steadily over the last fifty years, and that's just from anything you do on the surface of the land. When, when we, when you rely on the sole source aquifer, we pull the water from the aquifers below, so anything you do on the surface, you fertilizes pesticides, you sewage from your onsite systems, all that percolates down, sometimes it takes a ver- very long time. The wells that we're speaking about, we're pulling out of Magathie, that's several hundred feet.
It's not a thousand feet deep, it's not that deep.
The upper wells, the upper glacial, they're all contaminated, you know, by, by farming practices, so you gotta go down deep to get the, to get the potable water, but you, but you hear all sorts, I think, I don't wanna get too far field here, but you hear about different contaminants showing up in the drinking water wells, P T O S, on foot dioxane, all these personal care products, they're showing up in the water.
Antibiotics.
Antibiotics, so all now the well, now the water companies, you're gonna be hearing about treating, treating the wells at the wellhead before they distribute it out. So we really have to do a better job and recognize that whatever we do up top ends up down in the bottom, and that's where, that's where we're drinking from.
Thank you, Mark. I'm just, I'm sorry, one, one, I think there's an interesting chart here, um, take line one, dash one, talks about the system upgrading to two hundred fifty gallons, roughly ten million, upgrading to three hundred twenty gallons.
Bob, we're gonna do a much deeper dive on that report.
Okay.
Yeah.
In the weeks ahead. Moving the treatment plant to seven, eight, nine gallons. That's my point here, sorry, I don't, we'll talk about it later.
I've got no sticker shop dealing with this. It's uh, because if you start off there, you're not gonna, it, it is what it is, that's what it costs. And it's, it's something unique to us, that's what this infrastructure costs, and so whereas when you personalize these numbers, they're scary, but we just have to um, try and push through that to get, to get things up. So we'll go into this in a really granular way.
And we'll even go into the costing and how that plays out over time, over generations.
Yeah.
Because this gets paid for over generations as well.
Our, our current grant applications are for ten million dollars right now.
This is not in the workshop.
Good evening, once again, uh, Tommy John Scavoni, Southampton Town Council, uh, nice presentation, and I wanna applaud the village for really going after this, because the numbers that you're talking about and the nitrogen numbers, you know, that's all over the town. Um, Sag Harbor has the only municipal wastewater treatment plant in the town of Southampton. Um, West Hampton did hook up to Gabriski Airport, so they're, they're now a municipal uh, treatment facility, we're trying to establish one in Hampton Bays. Um, it's not easy to do this, we're also trying to establish one in Riverside. And again, it's, it's not easy to do this, I'm hoping that the public will accept these facilities in our communities. It's something that, that we just haven't had in our lives out here, and I think you said it quite well. Suffolk County was built somewhat on the cheap, I, I think, in that we wanted to not have a lot of people out here so we didn't build these facilities when uh, the developers came in and, and laid out the roads and, and uh, and the subdivisions and whatnot. So it is going to be difficult to turn the ship around. Um, it's gonna take many levels of government, village, town, county, the state, and uh, we're hoping that the federal government who has completely left the field on this issue, um, will get back into the game and uh, and, and will provide the kinds of monies that we need in our communities to, to uh, build the kind of infrastructure uh, that we need, you know, seventy-eight million, seventy-nine million?
Seventy-eight.
Yeah, um, okay.
Where are you gonna put it, sorry?
Oh, no, it is, there are, there are, there are a lot of questions. Um, you know, we live on a, a compromised water body here and uh, to the extent that that can go on, I don't know the answer to that, we're looking at our third straight year of a one hundred percent scallop die-off out here. I said it properly, scallop, and um, scallop, that's an East End thing. Uh, but also, uh, you know, we are on our sole source aquifer, we don't have a viable alternative for drinking water, and you know, thinking of our children, our grandchildren, it's really incumbent upon us to do this, so thank you.
Great drainage, so it didn't really represent.
But there weren't a lot of people.
Yeah, that, yeah. Um, any other questions, is there a question?
No, I just would like to say, can't we uh, somehow work out that everybody in the village pays additional, um, their taxes or something? In other words, they should be assessed, everybody in the village, maybe they start thinking a little bit more about what they're doing.
I think so, um, use of water.
I had two points, man. Sure, I'm, I'm sorry, not even you.
Sorry.
Not to make me remember, um, there is consideration about, uh, there is talk about increasing the percentage of water quality monies in the community preservation funds, which could very well mean more monies for municipalities and people, but, you know, for, for doing what Sag Harbor Village is doing now. Um, in the short term right now, there are also grants available for people for IA systems in the town of Southampton and East Hampton as well. You, you talked about the county earlier.
I was gonna say that.
Absolutely in place.
And I think some state monies, but the, the town is definitely stepping up with that.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna have a little fun to tell you that I was, before the sewer plant was built, I know the discussions that came to push it, to have it in the village. That one will turn the upper deck out of Baron's coat.
Thank you, um, I just wanna say a word, uh, uh, John Parker is, is here as faithfully as anyone in the village. Um, the city's, I give recognition and the credit he deserves as the guardian of the waterfront. Um, and uh, thank you, John.
And I'll second that, John, working with this project, nothing possible without uh, John's attention to detail.
And I'd also say about my colleague, we have just five of us in this little volunteer government. And uh, Abel's been working this, this is his job, and he has a big company that he runs, a lot of travel, and he's mastered his subject. Um, and so thank you.
Thank you very much, I'd like to say that.
Renee, do you have a comment?
Yeah, just a quick uh, comment and exit report, thank you very much, Mark, and I'm here here again to John Parker. My question is, and it's Matt, that I have a question about, so you said that thirteen percent of our households, am I correct, currently are under the system you're gonna expand, uh, expand it with this plan? And John mentioned that it would double it, so if it's thirteen percent, I'm gonna round down to like twenty-five percent. We still have seventy-five percent of the homes that are not within the system per se. Um, and I'm, as a business person and looking at segments and shares, I always kinda think about the opportunity in that seventy-five percent, you kinda go with fish are. And not only the fishing, that's seventy-five percent, but that, the amount of uh, pollution, lack of the right word, is immense, it is ten times the amount per household as the part that we're trying to solve. Now, we should solve it, and we should invest in that, we should get the grants for that. But I'm, I'm asking the village trustee board, that seventy-five percent where the fish are, how, at some point, there will be some discussion about that, and you may have already discussed it, and I'm late to the game on this, but that is troublesome to me. Because what I hear is gonna be generational to pay for what we're talking about for that twenty-five percent. So, and I understand we've not been too successful in getting uh, individual homes to change this system. Um, I still want to encourage um, the effort to get those seventy-five percent because that's where the fish are.
Yeah, I, I, we, we agree, and what we're looking at, this is a long journey, I mean, the plant has been there for almost seventy years. Uh, we've only really started to look at expanding and, or not expanded, to, to look at expanding the service areas in the last three or four, five years. Uh, the plant's not gonna be the answer to everybody, we talked earlier about community systems. If you took an area like Redwood, because it's geographically bounded, that Redwood could be, we could, um, that Redwood could be, we could um, have a community IA system that would just serve Redwood. It would be run by the village, um, it would be, have to be sited somewhere, maybe it's, I don't know, so be far, or maybe there are different uh, ways of treating this, like the science and the technology changes all the time, so what works for Redwood may not work for other, other areas. But the goal is, I mean, ultimately, it, it won't happen in my time on the war, but if, if we get traction on this, and it's a real project that's moving forward, and we have a, we have a package we can hand off to future boards, that this is, this is a road we can all travel together. It might take us, it might take us ten, fifteen, twenty years. But as, as they say, it's like planting a tree, whereas the best time, twenty years ago today. So we can't sort of get put off by the idea that this is an enormous expensive project. We just have to take it one step at a time, and I think this is a really good step. If we can do this, we can get eighty to a hundred of the most polluting homes that was through no fault of their own. It's where they're sited, where they're located, and how the water tables been rising. If we can get them connected, and we can see some real results in our waterways, that's gonna give us the impetus, and it's given us the opportunity to raise more money, get more people involved, there really need community buy-in here. This is not cheap, it's not gonna be free. Um, but it, it, it's gonna be really necessary, because the alternative is just untenable. Because as this water goes, so goes the village and the value of all of our properties and, and the cohesiveness of all of our lives. I think it's nothing more important. It's an existential situation for the village that has to be done.
Totally agree. I just want to emphasize the math of it.
Yeah, as I say, you can't be afraid of the math.
No, not the math of paying for the twenty-five percent. I get that, we're gonna all have to pay something, fifty dollars a year, I get that, and willing to do that. My question is, we're still underwater in a sense, because it is seventy-five percent of the households putting out ten times per household. What you're gonna get is a benefit from the few, if you would plant, yes, very good, continue. I'm just saying, I think we need a dual planning strategy.
Oh, we do. It's multifaceted.
That was it, thank you.
I think, I think if you go through the master plan, that's discussed. Uh, the, the, the other alternatives for the rest of the village, I mean, having been on the committee, I can say that you, you had, we had to make some decisions as to what we were gonna look at, and, and, and you could wait until you had a plan for the absolute whole village, or you could move ahead with what you could do and do now, and we decided to move ahead with what we could do.
I agree with you, that everything's important.
I'm fine.
We will uh, finish this out, Mark. Go in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
All right, thank you. We'll pick it up from here now, um, we have an introduction, a local law, amending chapter two fifty, taxation article five, senior citizens exemption, article six, persons with disability in the name of, this is um, you know, pursuant to a state uh, program and updates that is required, your motion, taking motion. And Tom, is there a second?
Second.
All those, any discussion?
There's a public hearing set for October eleventh.
So what is this, the motion that we have to be able to adopt in our next session?
Yeah, will you be setting a public hearing?
All those in favor, you can by saying aye. Opposed, motion is agreed to. Uh, we come now to a public hearing, the local law to amend the local chapter two sixty-five, forty-one, parking prohibited during all hours, prohibited parking on the east side of Columbia Street and the south side of John Street. We've talked about this before, and uh.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, the matter is agreed to, and public hearing.
I just say it's well needed. I mean, this is something, can't even get down the street. Got one truck parked on both sides. A hazard or potential. I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing is opposed, um, can we?
There was, yeah, there's a resolution of adoption, if you're consideration for that.
And that is the next one?
Mm-hmm, no, this one.
No, but it, it's the same.
Yes.
Um, we hear then a motion to adopt.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The matter is adopted, thank you. We have now a continued public hearing uh, to extend sewer system service area from Bay Street on Rice Street to twenty-four Rice Street. This is a budget we've talked about before. This came about as part of a legal settlement involving students on that street. Um, and we hear now a motion to open a public hearing.
This, this hearing's actually opened, it last time it's open, and we can just hear if there's anyone here from the public wants to speak. And then the public hearing resolution of adoption, if you're consideration.
Okay, so the motion do that open, which is what it says here is not needed.
No, sorry about that.
So, um, uh, the hearing is sorted, then?
Yes.
Is there anyone to be heard on this matter? There are none, uh, chairman here, a motion to close the public hearing.
Some, I'll second it, I'll second.
There was a favor to it by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair then hear motion to adopt.
So.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The matter is agreed to, thank you. We have a series of action items, um. We have nothing listed on the discussion, uh, a series of action items, number one, uh, a request to prepare for the Pearson PTSA to have a annual homecoming break up Saturday, September seventeen, uh, that happens just to be this weekend. Having a thing, starting in Nassau Street, down Rain Street to Bash Park. Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is agreed to, thank you. Um, Karen Crissell, Karen Crissell events, request permission to have a wedding at the church, uh, at forty-eight Madison Street on Saturday, September twenty-fourth, from four P M to eleven P M. Is there a motion?
They have a parking plan?
I don't, we, we have to defend that issue. The second party.
These are, um, referred to other agencies, right?
Yeah.
Uh, this here, with uh, the, the, please, having, having bad.
To advance.
Okay.
I only can turn it to the fact that it's going to eleven P M with the noise, the village. Is there any neighbors from around the church that have anything to say in that here?
Because once one comes, it'll all come.
What's that?
Once one party is gonna be there, they're all gonna come down.
There's a limit to the number of parties that will be. The bill, it's gonna happen here.
It's three.
For residential.
For residential, this is not residential, is this?
No. This is, uh, this is.
Yeah.
Tom, you suggested we, uh.
Just, just in the application, the applications for a hundred, a hundred fifty people, there will be a parking attendant service, it says on the application, um, for thirty offsite parking. Um, so that's what's in the application itself right now. If that's not insufficient. I mean, the church has been holding events, but now this is going to a wedding, and so.
This is going to a private. Everything else has been.
And this is next, this is two weeks.
I mean, as long as they're, tip of my mind, and as long as they're aware that the music at ten o'clock, I mean, it's gonna be noisy at points after ten o'clock.
Much, much, uh, I would say that, uh, we, we, that we, that, uh, change the closing time to ten P M.
Yeah, and then I can wind that party for now.
Right, um, and I think this is the person we're saying that the church is a new institution, but uh, weddings very rarely happen uh, at, uh, other public institutions. So, uh, is there a motion?
I'll second it.
Second, uh, with the uh, amendment that the uh, the permission is extended to ten o'clock.
No, anything, what you're talking, saying, what is the, what motion in the end?
I'm sorry, not, I don't know how to answer you when you say that.
Well, if people would talk, do you have a, the system there?
We have speakers. Can you, can you hear us, Nada? Can you hear us?
I can hear you now.
Okay, so what we did, right. So that there was an act, it was an action item for a wedding to be held at the church, you know, the church.
Yeah.
Old tradition church.
We understand.
And it was from four P M to eleven P M.
Yeah.
So I suggested that no music be played after ten.
Excellent.
So that the noise would be kept.
And you were discussing the parking, did you accept it?
Yes, we did.
All right, that's, we didn't know if you had accepted everything or not.
Well, I just had one stipulation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We, the motion was to approve the resolution.
Okay.
Uh, which has been recommended by police chief, as I mentioned, and the chief of police. These, all of these applications go through the police department if they involve a public gathering, as you know. So, um, the only amendment we made to it, in moving it, was to change the.
So can I say also that there, and suggest that there's a parking plan attached, I mean, there's, there was no plan attached. It does say that there will be an apartment attendant service, but unlike some of the applications that we saw that showed Valley Park would happen at, you know, would be taken to St. Andrew's.
Well, let us, let us determine that, um, my understanding is the chief review, but it's not attached there. My understanding is the chief, uh, review.
I'm okay with it with that stipulation, so, okay, I made that second, Mr. Plum, trustee Plum's motion. So that's where we're at.
All right, uh, we have a motion in the second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye with the event.
Aye.
All right, opposed, the matter is agreed to, thank you. Uh, Mrs. Hester, the Sag Harbor volunteer ambulance, request to move Joseph Troppia of insurance role as a paid E T driver, and Josh Miller, her volunteer. She also requests the addition of Samantha Hutchins and Alyssa Cortez to the insurance roles as the paid E T driver.
So we're just dropping somebody who hasn't been able to work, and we're adding a personnel. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the matter is agreed to, uh, next up, authorization for Chris Talbot. Ossie Moni, keep paying our code enforcement officials to attend the annual tri-county uh, New York State Conference in Kingston, New York, from November fifteen to eighteen, November fifteenth to eighteen.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second? This is a good event, we sent folks our technical point. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion is agreed to, Judith Leguerre, LaHere, of Long Island Haitian Chamber of Commerce, request permission to have a fundraiser, uh, nation in the offices on September twenty-fourth, from one P M, uh, seated area of, uh, David's Beach. Did we, uh, make that check? With, uh, we were, we require some folks about this.
Is anybody here to speak to that about that event?
Hello, good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Judith, come, come forward. Are you, are you Judith Leguerre?
I'm Judith Leguerre.
That's it?
Yes, you said it right.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Absolutely.
Uh, tell us a little more about this, this is a new event.
Yes, it is. Um, so I am the president and chairwoman of the Long Island Haitian Chamber of Commerce. Really, the commerce was, uh, founded mainly by our initiative to help the Haitian diaspora here on Long Island specifically. We have a huge Haitian community on Long Island, on both, excuse me, on both Nassau and Suffolk County. Uh, I was introduced to Vanessa Lagarde, and I was explaining to her that we wanted to create an experience that changed the narrative of how Haitian people were depicted. Oftentimes, we are depicted as poor and unfortunate. Uh, however, we have a thriving community, and most importantly, we have an organization called Haiti Children, where we want to provide medical and educational resources to five hundred kids, and that's what the fundraiser is about. So our goal is to raise approximately a hundred thousand dollars through our guests, uh, that will join us for the fundraiser on the twenty-fourth.
So it says the seated area east of the drainage ditch.
So.
The same area that the carnival is held, or is it on the other side? Because we, that's our, that's our medevac landing site.
Right, and I had asked a question, which I guess we did get, oh, wait, two, um, that the grassy area uh, has, north end has the, uh, cutting medevac site. Uh, when you discuss this, you know, with, well, I mean, within the department, who did, who did you discuss the exact location?
Uh, I spoke to the team when I was filling out the application.
The team?
So Connie, uh, was, uh, the individual.
She showed me the picture, and it was the unofficial dot heart.
Okay.
Yes.
And, um, was there a reason for the show? Did you sign that, or did you, uh, uh, identify that location?
Well, I, I, I saw the location, um, and I thought that, you know, being the fact that it's a big open field, that it would probably be feasible to have, you know, a, an event of this nature there.
The alternative, did you consider the alternative of the central, uh, grass area, either side of the road rankings?
The dog park.
There's also the area that's just on the other side, uh, where the door pockets, but there's like a scenario where we park cars in the carnival. I don't know how much space you're gonna need.
How many people do you expect?
So we're expecting between two hundred to three hundred people.
Okay.
What I'd like to do, uh, with the columns, is to do a conditional approval, subject.
Is that working on the location, that's all.
To work out the location, and, um, I want to consult with the chief on the volume, but also the allocation of that space, I don't think it's ideal.
Yeah, I don't think you want to be over there.
Yeah.
It's soggy.
Yeah.
So.
The static space down there.
If you're around, would you be enough to come up to sit in the village hall tomorrow?
Yeah.
And we'll work out the detail.
Okay.
We want, I encourage you, but we want to do a better job.
Allocating the location, okay, that's understandable. Thank you so much for your time.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Uh, the second?
Second.
Subject to our refining the details.
Thank you.
All those in favor, you can by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, you, uh, my motion is agreed to, number six, Anna Yanez, will, will be okay, request permission to have a wedding ceremony dinner on September seventeen, from six to twelve A M. The live musician. This, I had a question, is when I saw this, um, there are commercial restaurants. Uh, do commercial restaurants regularly imply permission to host a wedding? Is that a regular manual?
This is the first, one of the first times I've seen a restaurant apply for a wedding.
Outdoor live music. Well, we had that issue years ago, they used the east end of the, the, the upper areas. Uh, and there's no residents there. So that was a consideration last time, but it wasn't about weddings, that they were having a regular Sunday event. If you remember, they have combo dancing and all that, so, um, I'm just curious why we would, uh, I'm not sure we want to be approving, uh, my wedding, all the. Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm, I'm just curious.
Can you come up with a point?
Hi, everyone, I'm Vanessa Lagarde. So I'm, I'm just curious what this was, I say. So I'm I'm just curious what this was. I say, just so I wanted to hear what you had to say about this last one. So with the church saying a wedding, you're now saying that they have to end their music at ten P M. because it's in the residential area, right? And the church is a commercial property, correct?
Well, it's a not-for-profit ours property.
But so are you now, you know, um, dictating what kind of events that the church can have? They have all kinds of events. Now we we come to this restaurant and you're saying, well, it's a restaurant. And you're not like, and and you're saying that they want their live music, which is loud, all right, to go to twelve A M. and you don't have something.
We haven't gotten that.
We didn't say we want that. We're just exploring.
Well, why are you exploring?
Here's my, here's my concern.
At ten P M.
Here's my concern. If the music goes past ten o'clock, then they're gonna call for resources to complaints. And they want, we're gonna have to allocate resources to go down there and tell them to lower the music. So that means we're moving people around to handle complaints that this board is gonna approve something. So I have a problem with that.
So hasn't the rule always been that music has to end at eleven o'clock?
I believe it's ten o'clock.
Ten.
Really? Where's it say that it's ten?
I'm sure it's in the code.
Yeah, we can have it put inside here.
Okay, yeah, I want to see that code.
It's also available online.
That's one of the reasons why the.
Okay, all right. I'm curious. Thank you.
I I I'm sorry we troubled you, but uh, I want to understand, this is the first you've seen from this waterfront restaurant. Since we had a different question, which was they were doing regular musical bets on a Sunday afternoon, Saturday afternoon. And I don't recall now how we paid the Spencer, what rule we may have made under those circumstances. Entirely different. The the terrorists involved there is into a parking lot behind an office building. So we had no residential issue there, but we were nevertheless concerned about uh, the matter of that. So I think on this one, we're just feeling our way. And uh,
Well, the church is in a residential district.
Well, then the church is in residential, that's that's a different calculus for us. Uh, they literally have six, seven, six properties with regular bets. That that event is uh, they're not describing that this is outdoor. To my repulsion.
Which you refer to now? The church, they'll be okay, yeah.
No, the church uh,
Is that outdoor?
Is that an outdoor?
You know, unless it's a random event.
But thank you because I will will work this out. So um, so if we okay, um, yes, I would want to know um, one, why uh, it is not a matter of fact is to go wedding by wedding commercial establishments. So is there something special about this that requires us or recommend that we do that? And then two, uh, even though it is non-residential area, uh, whether our intentions, whether we use. And that's uh, that's the power. So.
Are these supposed to be submitted well?
Yes, both both of these applications, the churches as well, should have been submitted long before this.
Yeah, I think it takes two days to figure this out.
It's, you know, don't really want to hold up somebody's wedding, but you know, the church has a parking plan and they check the box saying they do. Um, in a residential neighborhood, it's problematic. This being done two days before, I have no problems with it. They have a hundred and sixty five guests. It's a restaurant. That might be anywhere anyway. Um, do we need to approve is the question, I think. For them to go forward with it.
The code has live music timely. It's ten o'clock, so just enforce that. I mean, this is ridiculous. It's happened here two days.
Yes, so so my personal, I would be proud to approve it. Right. I would say we could approve it as long as they need the code requirements for time allotted for for music. Then let's, we can do, we can do it better.
If they need.
They're always, that's always put in place to protect the residents, peace and so tranquility of the village. So as long as they're not disturbing that, then it's not a problem. I don't have a problem with it.
I haven't seen a specific exemption in our wedding in a um, in a restaurant, but it could just have been a policy of the board. So I'd have to check and invite you.
Could we ask them to have the band inside? Or not much.
Let's not solve this here.
The one, either we're gonna approve it or not.
But I will, I I I'm gonna say that I'll approve it as long as they need the code requirements for for live music and and the noise ordinance. I can find it.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right.
So we have a motion and a second.
And I would say that um, I will with counsel review tomorrow. That while your approval uh, must be consistent with code for these events, we'll also examine questions, commercial establishment subject to the same time protocols as other properties.
Right.
You know, it was a substantial bad dress. Yeah, so Liz and I will show this. And if it doesn't fit, uh, it's outside the existing code, uh, I'll be in touch. All right.
Yeah, so we have a motion and a second.
Right. Subject to review by the mayor and the council tomorrow.
Okay.
For all in favor. For conformity with the code. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Number seven, Lindsay Sanchez, Rochetton Fire District, uh, School District. Request permission to have Allee Cardinal, a custom house by Hollywood Street on the day of four, October thirty. From eleven A M. to four P M. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor, you can put a saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution now um, for a budget transfer, the June twenty twenty twenty-two budget transfer. Is there a motion? Resolution number three, item number eight, for a second.
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Number nine, on the first page to accept twenty twenty-two migrant isolation and glad it was approved.
So.
Second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Adders approved, number ten, resolution, September twenty-two to retain Stephen Leventhal, lawyer, Leventhal, Lani and Blinkoff. L L A as counsel, sorry, longtime counsel to the village of Set Harbor Board of Ethics. Uh, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Paul is reappointed. Uh, number eleven, resolution, September twenty twenty-two, establishing energy benchmarking requirements for certain municipal buildings.
I'll make the motion. This was presented to us by uh, the young.
Very, yeah. This is what Jacob wrote to us.
Yeah.
This gets us points in that system.
Sorry, I made a motion.
Class.
Uh, second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. Number twelve, September twenty-two, in support of South Hampton Town Board Resolution twenty-two uh, twenty twenty-two seven sixty-one, mandating the town code chapter to create a community housing fund.
I'll make the motion. This was what Tommy John, he spoke of.
He spoke of and Jake.
Yes, just wanted us to officially as a board to adopt the motion.
It's important what they're doing, right? And we heard from the supervisor. Is there a motion?
I made a motion.
Second. Second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is agreed to. Number thirteen, uh, to accept the resignation, Robert Adams is often a member to the start preservation, uh, order of start preservation architecture review. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Robert has served us uh, quite well as an alternate. Uh, I was recruiting him to come full time to his uh, personal schedule didn't allow that. And in fact, uh, he's busy enough to ask to be relieved from this assignment now. Uh, he's been a terrific uh, board members, uh, we're. Very good fellow. Is there a motion to accept the resignation?
Bob, I'll make a motion. Eight, second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Number fourteen, D Yardley, should have been from courts, requested Dylan Tobias to take the law prohibition.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye, welcome to the team.
Yes. Support to the motion number uh, fifteen, support submission grant application to Southern County Water Protection Restoration Project for Sewer Service Expansion. Uh, Mr. Gorge.
Um, this is a grant application, putting down the two hundred fifty thousand dollars that we need to, it's basically a paperwork aspect of this. There's a matching out, there's a matching uh, requirement of two hundred fifty thousand in the bills by now, which are all the other applications going through that will be a decision. So I'll make a motion. I'll second.
I'll second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Matters agreed to. Next up, authorizing pleasure to the unappropriated fund out to the bond anticipation notes principle, I think.
Yes, for the down, for each payment for the bot band to reduce that payment for the.
A life substitution of substitute, being substituted for.
Yep, for a band bond.
The bond. Or the bond. All those, is there a motion?
So.
A second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is agreed to. Next up, to authorize the village to second Harvard Justice. Uh, those justices submit a grant application for financial assistance to the state of New York. This is an annual uh, pro forma grant that received an absence from grid court. Is there a motion?
I'm with it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Matters agreed to. Uh, next up, a green infrastructure project for Cacai Estuary Program funding Bay Street previous pavement uh, parking lot in Northwest former Haven Beach Parking Lot.
I spoke about this earlier. This is a um, this is a non-reimbursement fund. We actually get the money upfront. It's a hundred percent and it'll deal with surface water that's gathering on Bay Street where the previous pavements are to chase camera, the roads of the actually work as intended. And will also remove surface water from the northwest corner of Haven Beach Parking Lot. Uh, adjacent, I guess, towards the side. These are two projects that were ready to go. This money is available to the village. Uh, if we get our paperwork again by the end of the week, we'll have this money. We'll be able to execute on those projects. This fund also offers a lot more money.
And this corrects what turned out to be a problem.
Yes.
And it uh, you do some hanging around here. It's not previously.
It's previously.
So I'll make a.
Make a motion. You're second.
I'll second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is agreed to. I follow up the next slide. So very quickly, this is a resolution to retain consulting services of Sean McLean of the consultant firm Impact Collective. Resolved Village Board Trustees hereby retaining services of Sean McLean of Impact Collective in connection with the review of the Affordable Workforce Housing Package Application. And the third is all of those of board trustees, rules of entering to the public services contract interest in paying an impact and further authorizes the mayor to execute any involved related documents subject to approval uh, by the village attorney. This is the matter we raised earlier. Uh, Mr. McLean has a uh, pretty strong background for his work, um, most recently at Niro Rochelle and other places. And he will be coming to us as a project advisor uh, in the processes that will be performed by a V. Uh, and he will be supported beyond that age yet by an environmental planner, um, a engineer and other professional talent as needed so that the uh, this application, which is one of the largest we've had in many years, will have full professional support to us, uh, to we trustees as we work our way through this process. So I'm here motion to uh, retain the consulting services of Sean.
I'm with it.
So second.
Yeah.
Anything to be added? Not this time. Okay. Um, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. Thank you. Uh, next up, for the little ten bills, um, I would ask you to promote your own line. Uh, the one in thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. Is there a motion?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the matter is agreed to. You know, it's easy to just spend money.
Yes.
We have now uh, our regular uh, public comment period for anything else, nothing else cares to be heard. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you all for your work. I'm Susan Enriga Stain, and I live in Minneva Beach subdivision. And during your last meeting, there was a presentation uh, by the tri community uh, about their overview. Uh, and I'm wondering, because I may not be here for the next meeting, if it will be if the opportunity for the Sands uh, group, uh, which I am a member of the steering committee, will they be invited to make a presentation as the tri community did it? I wanted this on the record because I saw nothing noted.
Sure. What we did basically is we have the presentation. And uh, we just built more time in the process for uh, their proposal for an opportunity for you folks to uh, come forward as well, uh, pre the early request. So this would all be coming back at the October meeting.
Okay, so we'll be formally, uh, we will be provided with an opportunity.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you. Uh, is there anybody else to be heard of upcoming?
I was just wondering about what the village, Set Harbor Village Board of Ethics is.
The village is a board of ethics consisting of three uh, appointees uh, who who essentially review uh, requests for clarification of any potential conflicts of interest uh, in particular, and advise uh, on appointments that we might be making where there is an issue of a conflict.
Gentlemen speaking, it's course separate fire pursuant to um, the code and general municipal law. We have an ethics code. We have an ethics code you can take a look at and it states what their purpose is. So it doesn't mean really, does it? It's recorded. It's supposed to be recorded.
And it it doesn't, it also has a new bill to receive when you feel a complaint. But the reality is we have not had any certainty that I aware of at the time of last serve. So it is primarily advising on specific matters and those are fairly improved. Mr. Leventhal has been the counsel for this village and many, many other governments in both counties. And our board has um, uh, three members, um, and they all now serve for at least a couple of years.
So it's none of, none of the village board trustees are on the ethics board?
No, it's an independently separately, separately appointed and.
Who appoints them?
The board members.
You all do.
We do.
Okay, great.
This is a very standard.
I have a question. Kate, I have a question for you. How is the farmers market going? And is there any concerns that you have that the village needs to address? And is there any concerns that you have that the village needs to address?
Well, it was a bit slow last weekend because of the harvest. Everybody in the whole world was harvest.
But everything's running pretty.
I think so. Thank you very much.
It's a good, great event. Thank you.
Thank you very much, yeah. There, there's a nice group of people this year. Also, one other thing, I wonder who the lady on the right is? That we, she's not usually here.
This is Connie McGrath.
Just helping out Kate, sorry.
And you're helping Kate, yes, okay.
Kate is at the training that put on by the ICOM group. Many mayors. And we're trying to increase the number of training opportunities that our staff, our young staff who's able to take, Connie is now almost veteran here. How many years do you have to be before you're an all-time?
Been here four years.
Four years.
Four years.
An all-time. And Cassie, who, there, there she is, is a young all-time.
So the, that's great, the women, because, you know, the church had that opening, a party for all the village employees of last.
Yes, yes. I don't.
Monday night, I don't know.
I don't, my calendar's so full.
They had an open house for all the village. It was anybody who works in the village, stores, everybody. It was very sparsely attended and we were, Anada or somebody was asking whether.
I'm not sure.
I didn't.
You know, Connie.
That was the fact.
But they got invited. The, the village, the development to that, about the women girls got invited to the.
The women.
The women, yes, I'm sorry.
The answer is, I don't know. And is there anything else? All right, with your motion secured, thank you, everybody.
So.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Don't forget your.